You good, you good? Yes, okay. Medfield TV is on. For all, for all of you in the room, we actually have a little bit of a different kind of start for the meeting. We have one first item to appoint a person to the Tri-County Vote Tech Board. And so what we're going to do first is have a joint session with Michelle Kirkby, Mike Pastore, and me voting to approve that appointment. And then we'll move right into our regular agenda. So thanks for being here on time. Thanks for tolerating five or six or seven minutes of getting set up here. Let me start. Yeah, I'll do the, I'll do the introduction and we'll start the regular meeting. So welcome everyone here. Just to make sure you're all aware, we have meetings where this is a joint meeting or this is a hybrid meeting where people can also join in by coming in on the Zoom link. So you probably already, if you know how to get here for our meetings, you probably know how to sign in for meetings on the Zoom link. For those of you here in the room, if you haven't been here before and if at any point you're going to speak, we're going to ask you to either come to the microphone that's in the center of the room or the microphone that's at the lectern. You should identify yourself and your address here in Medfield. When you speak into the microphone, it'll seem like it's not doing anything. The purpose of the microphone is to pick up the audio feed from Medfield TV. So it's not amplifying your voice in the room. It is working, it's just that its purpose is so that people tuning in are able to hear that. So I think that's about all we need to do to get the meeting started here. What I will do is go ahead and open up our first meeting. There is a single point of order or point on the agenda. That's the joint appointment of Juris Sahukar by the Chair of the Medfield School Committee, Chair of the Medfield Select Board, and Medfield Town Moderator. I don't think we need to have any discussion. This is a straight forward.
He identified everyone participated on Zoom.
Oh, okay. What I, we have two, there are three of us. I'm one here that's at the Select Board meeting. Michelle Kirkby is joining us by Zoom, the Chair of the School Committee, and Mike Pastore is also joining us by Zoom, who is the Town Moderator. So the three of us are the body that actually makes this appointment. Okay, can you do that? And I guess we should start with a motion and Michelle, out of deference to you as the Chair of the School Committee, I'll give you that option if you'd like.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to appoint Michelle Kirkby to the Tri-County Vote Tech High School.
Mike, do we have a second?
I want to say a bad motion.
Okay, then we have to do a roll ball move. So let me start, Michelle, vote.
Michelle Kirkby, yes.
Mike Pastore.
Pastore, yes.
And Gus Murphy, yes. Should complete our business for designating the representative to the Tri-County Vote Tech High School. Thanks very much for tuning in. I'm really disappointed you didn't come to watch the rest of the meeting, Mike, but, okay. We'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting out and we will pick back up with our regular meeting. You certainly are free to stay on, you guys, but.
Thank you very much.
I knew you'd appreciate that opportunity. All right. All right, we now are ready to start our regular meeting for August 12th, the regular Select Board meeting. At the very start, what we typically do, I've already explained about the video recording, but the one thing we do do is take a minute just to basically recognize our service members serving across the country, or across the globe, to protect our country. So just a moment to acknowledge them. Okay, our first appointment is our second appointment on the agenda. Recognition of Bobby Bond on his retirement and thirty-six years of service in the Medfield Fire Department. Do we have Chief DeKing, do you have anything you'd like to say?
It's over, it's over.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. Welcome, everybody. I appreciate everyone coming. It's a great turnout by, by the department as, as usual. So, so we're here tonight, as, as Gus mentioned, to, to recognize Bob Bond for his thirty-six years of service with, with the department. Bob's a, as many of you probably know, he's a legacy in, in the department. His father was a long time member. When I joined the department in oh-five, Bob had already been here for sixteen years. And I mean, I've been here twenty and here I am chief, so that just goes to tell you how long he's been here. He's done a lot for the department. He rose to the rank of Lieutenant. We appreciate everything he's done, the mentoring he has given a lot of the younger guys. So we'd just like to thank him for his service.
I just have a personal note. You guys probably don't know anything about some of the other things that Bob's done. When I was an adult leader at Troop Eighty-Nine, the Boy Scouts of America, Bob was the person who, for, I'm not sure even how many years, Bob, but was the person who would teach the Boy Scouts CPR. And that, that's obviously wonderful to have somebody doing that. The other thing is, at least in the early stages of my tenure on the Board of Selectmen, I could count on Bob being at Donut Express on certain mornings. And, and you know, when you're, when you're in a position like this, it's a really good thing to have a few people who will tell you what you're screwing up if you ask them. And, and he served a very important role for me in probably at least the first five, six years. You just don't show up at Donut Express when I show up anymore, but he's, he's, he's served the town in ways that some of you would have had no reason to know. Okay, we have a certificate. It's the From the Town of Medfield Certificate of Appreciation on the occasion of your retirement for thirty-six years of service with the Medfield Fire Department, presented to Robert Bond in recognition of your dedicated service to the town of Medfield. In testimony whereof, the Select Board have subscribed their names and here to affix the seal of the town of Medfield this twelfth day of August, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you so much, thank you very much.
Okay. Our next order of business that we have is to do some more recognition for people who haven't been here as long as Bob has. We want to recognize our summer interns. Christine, this is the second year we've had summer interns, right? For any of you who were paying attention a year ago, our first year's experience with summer interns, I think we would unanimously say was tremendous. They did a wonderful job and that's what prompted us to have the program again this year with even more interns. So what we'd like to do is recognize our summer interns, and that's Rudra Mishra, Nicole Ferrera, Nora Marshon, and Victor Walsh. And so if we could, if we have the four viewers, any of you who are here, please come up. Right here, thank you, congratulations, and thank you very much for helping us out this summer.
Thank you very much.
And Nicole, yes? You had to talk to the, all right, well, this is good, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, good luck.
And I didn't, I didn't read the citation. It was somewhat similar. Again, it's a certificate of appreciation presented to each of the four interns in recognition of your exceptional work as a summer intern with the town of Medfield. In, in testimony whereof, the Select Board have subscribed their names and here to affix the seal of the town of Medfield, twelfth day of August, twenty-twenty-five.
All right, nicely done.
All right.
We're having some sound issues, so I'm just trying to fix that, we're getting some, some calls. Nobody at home can hear.
Move it closer, sure. This, this one's okay. Am I okay now? Is that good? Yes, sounds good. I was just too far away from the microphone. That's one of the few times that anybody complained they couldn't hear me. Most people say you talk too much, so it's a.
Different issue.
Refreshing change. All right. Next, we have a public hearing for solicitors licenses from Power Home Remodeling. A total of eight people, Dean Cohn, Anthony Perez, Dominic Walmsley, Colin Trumpler, Allison Siani, Lorraine Anderson, Keaton Sullivan, and Javi Firstler. Are they?
I don't have anybody online.
Okay.
I do know that Dean Cohn's wife is expecting a baby momentarily, so that might be why he is delayed. If we can hold to the end of the meeting, we can maybe continue to the next meeting.
Okay, we'll do that, because I think we also didn't get to talk to him in July. This is a, this is a rerun on that, okay? Well, then we'll hold that off. Next.
So do you close the public hearing or leave it open till the end?
We'll, we'll leave it open until the, till the end if they.
Okay.
I guess I hadn't officially opened the public hearing, so. Sometimes you make a mistake and it works out well. All right. Next, Joe Opiela to, Opiela to discuss final design and location of the historical marker for the King Philip War. I did have it right the first time. I, I overthought it, sorry. Well, you know, that made up for the mistake that I made that was a good thing just before that, so it's kind of, sorry, Joe.
Okay, so I'm back. I was last here two months ago. I've been busy for the last two months pulling together some details relative to this historical marker. I did provide you with a memo that's part of the packet. I want to remind you, primarily I just want to offer the copy for the, for the marker. And I don't know if you've had a chance to review it or you, I would like, if you would like to comment on it, I welcome your comments at this time. I also wanted to tell you about the proposed location that I discussed with the Sign Advisory Board in a meeting I had with them. I'll remind you that the copy for the marker is authored by Richard DeSorger. There have been several rounds of revision over the last two months. We consulted with indigenous persons, a prominent King Philip War historian, and members of the Medfield Historical Society. So the copy you have, are you all able to see it? Did you have a chance to look at it?
The link didn't work for me, but for some.
Well, the link for the packet is in the, your packet.
Yeah.
It's at the beginning.
It just didn't, it didn't work.
I got it online, I have it, so.
Yeah, do you mind showing it? Because I couldn't get it. That's why I was like, I didn't know if we were going to see it tonight.
Yeah, it was in the packet. I, I got that, but I couldn't get the.
I have the document, the.
It's in the packet for the Select Board.
Yes.
Right, they couldn't get the link to the size.
But do you have an image? Oh, I thought you had like an image.
No, 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 that's fine.
No, 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 we know that.
There was a link that said it was a picture of the marker, that's what didn't work.
Yes, and I think that that worked on some computers and not on other computers, so I brought a hard copy.
That's what I was hoping for, because I couldn't, yeah.
This is not, it's not the exact color because my printer didn't print, but the idea is that it's a gray silver background and black bordering and a black lettering for everything. With the exception of the town seal, which is potentially can be rendered in color.
To be determined.
My reaction was, having the town seal in color was better than not, but I may be missing something aesthetically, is it?
Well, the Peak House, I don't, I don't, I don't recall offhand. Is the Peak House State Seal in color?
No.
Okay, but on our street signs, the town seal is in color.
Which would you like, if you, I can't picture it not being, I can't, you know, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm up in the, I'm open to it.
Well, I mean, all the other historic signs, I don't think have color on them, but I like color, so I guess I'd tilt towards color.
Well, Siwa, the vendor recommended that we do it in color. They paint it and coat it, so it'll be long-lasting for no extra charge. So, okay, I'm good with that. So how about the copy?
I thought the copy was great. I thought you guys did a wonderful job.
I can't tell you how much we fussed and fidgeted with word commas, spaces.
Sensitive issue for Native Americans.
There is some possibility there'll be a tweak here or there, to be determined. We're still talking to a couple people who are interested in having something to say about it.
I had one, this is probably going to be a dumb question because it's reflecting my ignorance, but the only, and if Richard wrote this, then I, I know the answer to my question. The only thing I, I noted when it said seventeen English, and I said, was, were all of them originally from England? Were none of them from Scotland or?
Well, Gus, that's a good question, and I mean to ask Richard that, but I did not.
Okay.
But he certainly had a reason for putting that there.
Yeah, well, I, I.
I assume they were all, they were all English.
I just, I just was curious when I saw that.
Because at that time, again, sixteen seventy-six, I think, we were a hundred percent English here, and the Scotch hadn't come yet.
Yeah. I, I just know there's some Welsh that don't like being referred to as English.
You know, I mean, I'm gonna, we're, that's one word that we're gonna have further discussion about.
Wait, but, but I thought, I thought the copy was great.
Yeah, but the King Philip War historian, he vetted it, so.
Who was that? Was that Michael Tuvus?
It would be Eric Schultz, who did the talk at the library in, in May. He's written a book on King Philip's War. So he's very authoritative, and he continues, I mean, during this time of the war, the three-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, he's doing like a lecture tour at various historical societies and.
They only let in so many people and I couldn't, I signed up too late.
Well, if I'd known you were in the wings, I would have got you in, I had some sway there. I'd hate for you to miss it, because it was quite, you know, it was, it was quite a captive audience, standing room only, as you know, and so.
Library does a great job on those.
Yeah, and we're collaborating with them more and more, and we're gonna continue.
There's a spirit court judge that does a, a bunch of lectures on a whole bunch of different topics. I heard him on a couple of them, and, I mean, he goes on cruise lines and delivers the lectures too. Probably gets a free cruise out of it, so.
He gave, probably, he gave a talk on the Boston Massacre that was at COA in the spring that we co-sponsored.
Yeah, I missed that one too.
Was very, you know, attended with sixty, seventy people, I think we're there. He's, he's a good speaker for us. Any other, I mean, other details? So let me, can I talk about the placement of the marker?
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
Okay, so I met with the Sign Advisory Board. If you recall, I had, I threw out some tentative ideas for a location. We kind of batted things around a little bit in this room at the last meeting. Nothing conclusive, you know, but I, you recommended I meet with the Sign Advisory Board. So I met with them, I threw out the, the places we were thinking of and a couple others. So the places we were thinking of were Baxter Park, the Townhouse, Meeting House Pond, and then we talked a little bit about outside Memorial School on North Street there. And there was, and next to the FAF Center, we also talked about. So of those locations, the Sign Advisory Board hands down suggested that we go with the Meeting House Pond location as being a central location in town, friendly to vehicular and pedestrian traffic. If you're familiar with the Meeting House Pond sign that is there now, we're proposing replacing it with this sign and relocating the Meeting House Pond sign to the right of the garden on the corner of Ferrari and North Street, which should be a, a good location, which should be fine. We talked about it specifically with the Sign Advisory Board members, we talked about it with the Historical Society, talked about it with Richard. Everybody's in agreement that that's a great location. The little wrinkle is, however, the Meeting House Pond sign, I believe, is not on town property. It's on the church property. Somebody in the Sign Advisory Board, I forget which gentleman, Jeff, he had a property map, and there's a squiggly line between where the Meeting House Pond sign is and that garden is. One side is town property, the other side is church property. David Temple is on the Executive Board of the Church, and he is going to work with the. Uh, David Temple is on the executive board of the church, and he is going to work with the administrators of the church to get the proper permission to put that sign on that spot.
Was, um, the sign itself is a town sign?
The Meeting House Pond sign?
Yeah.
You know, I am not a hundred percent sure, so I asked Richard, I go, Richard, who do I ask about that sign? I'm sure you know something about it. He said, call Frank Iafola. So I called Frank, and Frank said, David Temple supervised the whole process of it, put, me putting it there. Now, it does make sense that David supervised it since it was on church property, but also David being the president of the Medfield Historical Society at the time would have involvement. He, David tells me he didn't have any involvement. So I don't know. I don't know.
I think there were some other signs like that that just appeared as well.
Well, so I don't remember when that was placed. Uh, I, I can't recall. The Baxter, uh, Park sign is similar. I kind of think they possibly were placed at around the same time, the Baxter Park sign and the Meeting House Pond sign. They're similar in style.
I, I was just curious, because I, you know, we, as a select board, we approve things like that, and I don't ever remember approving it, so I always take note of the ones that we don't approve.
So if it's on church property, would you have approved it? Is that a, is that your jurisdiction to approve a sign that's on the church property? Yeah, so.
I guess not.
Well, the question would be, is back in the day, did anyone even know it was church property? Did they just assume that it's on the pond, that it's town property?
Yeah, I don't know where Jeff got this map. It was, uh, it was hand-drawn, and there was a curvy line next to the Meeting House Pond sign before the garden. I mean, that's a matter of ten feet. Yeah.
I think there might be a Vine Brook sign on the other side of the street that I don't remember approving either, but nice signs.
Yeah, so anyway, that's the proposed location.
So, so I'm not sure, but I think probably your proposed location sound fine to all of us, so the only action there would be as if there's some cross-thread, you know, around church property versus town property with the other sign. You can come back to us if there's, if this isn't what you're gonna do, because we can't get to a resolution this way.
Yeah.
But I thought it was a good spot for the sign.
I mean, I should probably get something in writing from the church.
Yeah, before we move anything, I would, I would make sure that we know that what's going to go in is approved versus, if they leave what it is right, like, if you leave the Meeting House sign there now, no one's, no one's looking to move that, right?
Right.
And if they push back, would it be horrible if we left the Meeting House where it was and then put this new sign where we're gonna put the Meeting House Pond sign?
We considered that you can't, uh, place the historical marker on that corner, because you wouldn't have it being a, be perpendicular to the street. So it could be read from both sides. It's gonna be identical copy on both sides. That's standard for historical markers. If you look at all the nineteen thirty historical markers, including the Peak House sign, it's identical copy on both sides.
Okay.
Throughout the state of Massachusetts. I mean, that's, that's the standard, not only for the Peak, the Massachusetts signs, but other state signs as well.
Joe, are those signs aluminum, or what are they made out of?
Well, they're, they used to be, uh, cast iron in nineteen thirty. Now, they're aluminum, because it's, I guess, cheaper, more malleable and longer-lasting. But the studio that's doing it, I mean, they are, they've done half the mark, they've, they're the biggest producer of historical markers in the eastern part of the United States. They do the markers for several states. They're very professional outfit. Um, they specialize in historical markers. That's really their primary business. They are out of Marietta, Ohio, so I'm dealing with them long distance. Um, but then again, on the, on the picture, so I'm trying to replicate, and, and if, if you do get the link, and I'll send a link. Can I send a link tomorrow?
It comes up as, yeah, because when you click on it, what ends up happening is you get a error message.
Yeah, you know what? It opens on my computer, so I don't know what I did or didn't do.
It's an Adobe, most likely it's an Adobe issue.
Okay. But can I send that in tomorrow, and you can forward it on, so people can get a better idea of the, of the colors? The main thing is the colors. I mean, typeface, still TBD, but how do you feel about that typeface? Do you guys have a opinion? Strong one way or the other? There's gonna be two lines of headings, so it's gonna be heading one, Medfield and King Philip's War. That's probably gonna go over two lines. Those letters are gonna be an inch and a half tall, and then the February twenty-first, sixteen seventy-six is gonna be on a third line. That's gonna be an inch tall. And then the, the lettering of the cop, body copy is five-eighths of an inch.
So what we're looking here, here, the, the letters are five-eighths of an inch, so relative, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, it's not gonna be as readable from cars, you know, going thirty miles an hour, but if they're stopped at the traffic light there, they, they'll probably be able to read it.
Are, are, is the other, I'm not even sure how many of these, we certainly have at Peak House, and I'm not even sure how many of these markers we have in town.
I think the Peak House is the only one we have.
That's the only one, okay. Um, is it the same font? Is it the Peak House, and do we care?
No, the Peak House, I think, is all caps. And in intervening years, uh, people frown on an all-cap kind of presentation for something like this. And SEWA, this is standard that they do them in upper and lowercase.
Yeah, well, I, I like that better, I think, for the text. Plus, you probably can fit more in that one.
Well, the thing about the Peak House, uh, lettering too, it's much, it's much bigger. I mean, there's a lot more s- square inches, there's a lot less copy, uh, so there's more space.
I think the only other thing you brought up in your memo was to find, was to ask whether the DPW can help with installation.
Yes, I do want to ask about that. So there would be, uh, three pieces to it, I guess, uh, the dig in a hole, pouring cement, installing the marker, and then relocating the Meeting House Pond sign to that other spot next to the right of the garden.
So my only concern is we, we should not be installing a sign on private, on the church's property.
Yeah, so I would agree with that.
We can move the existing sign and take it off and put it, but we can't install that on the church.
Okay, right. So. You could hire a vendor for that.
In spirit, yes, but.
Yeah.
Okay, well, good to know, and I can attend to that detail. Thanks for your consideration of it. The other thing is, um, I don't know, can I obtain what they call, uh, they have a name for it, a vector file of the town seal? Do you have that, or, so I can get that in color and in black and white?
Yep.
Great. So I'll be following up with you on that.
Perfect.
Anything, is there anything else in the, any other pieces of information you care to know about? The pole, I mean, it's gonna be four, four feet, four to six feet above the ground, so it's gonna be eye level to read it. There is a QR code. Okay, the QR code, we had a choice to affix the QR code to the sign itself in the corner in a black box, and it would be a plastic insert in the box, because who knows what's gonna happen with QR code technology?
Right.
In the long term. Um, I asked several people about that. SEWA also provides a kind of way to affix the QR code to the post, and that's what we're choosing to do. Uh, the QR code, what, you know, will link to copy that's gonna give a much, um, more extensive description of what happened that day and the causes and effects of it. And that'll all be written by Richard.
Okay, works for me.
And, uh, yeah, the cost is what it is. We're looking to install it sometime in the spring. I don't know exactly what the plan is for three seventy-five. Uh, did I see somewhere we're gonna have an August thirteenth parade?
October.
October, okay. So, I mean, the anniversary, the three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, plus one because of the difference in calendar, is February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-six. So I don't know if we can, I mean, it may not even, we might have frozen ground at that time, and it wouldn't be impractical to install the sign then, but as soon as possible thereafter in the spring, maybe in conjunction with, if we have a Medfield History Day, Medfield History Weekend, like we have had the last two years, that would be an appropriate time to do it.
Yeah.
Likely there'd be a ceremony around it, some publicity. Um, I think it's a big deal that we're installing this sign in the town after three hundred and fifty years, that we're recognizing what happened that day.
I think it's a big deal too, yeah. I think that, um, there's so much history in Medfield that it would be wonderful to have a series of these signs around so that people could go around and take a tour with their QR codes and listen to Richard speak about each different building or.
Well, that would be, and I would agree with you, that's a whole different kind of worms.
There's an Eagle Scout that did that as his Eagle Scout project, so some of the places, like the Dwight Derby House, has a QR code on it.
Oh, yes, yeah. But, well, so if we decide to do that, and I am not gonna take up that baton at this time, but we do have a relationship with SEWA Studios. I mean, they will have our stuff on file. They'll know what we want. I mean, we can do other of these markers to be placed in Medfield if we so choose. I mean, maybe that's something for the Historical Society to take up, you, me. So we'll, we'll talk about that at a, at a meeting. Okay?
Okay, well, thanks so much for doing this.
That's it?
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you all, and, uh, we'll look forward to seeing that sign installed.
Appreciate, appreciate the effort you're putting into this.
Yeah.
It is a lot of effort, I have to admit. I had, didn't know, uh, what was involved when I got started with it, but, you know, just in terms of the copy, uh, in terms of stakeholders and people who would wanna have some say in it, the design of the marker, and the placement, of course. Yeah, so a lot of, a lot of little things, but I was happy to do it. I'm proud to be able to.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, we have Andy Costello, TSARC member, to discuss signage at Big Belly Receptacles.
Do you have a picture?
I am working on sharing that right now.
Mm-hmm.
There we go. Want to know, I did that all by myself without Brittany in the room, just in case anybody's keeping score.
My name's Andy Costello. I live at eighty-four Bridge Street in Medfield, and on behalf of the Medfield Transfer Station and Recycling Committee, I thank you for having me. I'm here tonight seeking approval of image wraps around two Big Belly waste bins in town. One is at Palumbo Liquors and the other is at China Sky. These wraps originally had a traffic symbol on the front of the recycling bin and on the two side panels. The recycling committee thought we should run it by the town. We were not aware we needed approval, as we hadn't thought of these as signs as much as information panels. But we were seeking clarification on the use of traffic sign symbols. I sent a copy of the images to the town administration's office on May twenty-ninth. Apparently, there was conversation circulating between the sign committee and the town hall about this project. Recycling committee was not included in that chain, so we heard nothing back on the subject until June tenth, when I got an email from Dana Hinter and saying that the sign committee would look into it. However, the day before, having not heard back from the town hall, I had mistakenly presumed all was well and gave the okay for the signs to be printed, which they were that day. I take responsibility for that, and now I'm here tonight seeking approval of the redesign of the signs. If approved, we would reprint the recycling bin front and the side panels. So if you look up at your screen, the green recycling bin is a new design, and the two side panels are new. The trash symbol, sorry, the trash sign side and the backs have been printed. They're, they're not, they have nothing to do with traffic signs, but they still need your approval. Um, so that's why I'm here tonight.
So let me, let me just interrupt for one second to give you some context. Our sign bylaw does not allow traffic symbols to be used on, on anything that is not.
So was there a traffic symbol on there? Is that what we're missing? Okay.
There was a traffic symbol. It was a stop sign to stop and put your trash in there.
Ah, okay.
So the sign bylaw, and Dana reviewed it, and, um, we are not allowed to place, um, traffic symbols on things, but I think these look great, Andy.
Yeah, these are good.
So.
And the sign, the signs that you mistakenly got are, those were the stop sign signs that we can't use? So that's why you got new signs, okay?
So I haven't gotten new signs yet, because we should be here, asking you for permission. Um, so I'd like to tell you why we wanna call attention to the Big Belly bins with these, with these information wraps. Um, recycling, reuse, and general waste reduction are the state's biggest waste management messages today. Massachusetts deals with six million tons of trash per year. Fifty-seven percent of that trash is disposed of in Massachusetts. Most of it goes to five incinerators, all of which are at capacity, and there are no plans for more. And fifteen percent of the mass trash goes to our five landfills, which are at seventy-nine percent capacity. So fifty-seven percent of our trash is disposed of in Massachusetts. The remaining forty-three percent is exported by rail. This percentage is rising as we run out of space in Massachusetts. Our trash goes to New York, Alabama, Ohio, New Hampshire, Virginia, South Carolina, Michigan, Connecticut, and Maine. These states are now charging more, up to five dollars a ton. Our ash from our incinerators, which is six-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand tons a year, goes to its own landfills, and they will be at capacity soon. Massachusetts twenty-thirty solid waste goal to reduce waste is not going well. Twenty-twenty-three data shows that Massachusetts trash includes the following items, which should be composted, recycled, or reused. Our trash includes twenty-nine percent food waste, twenty-one percent cardboard, a hundred and fifty thousand tons per year of wood, a hundred and twenty-five thousand pound, tons of textiles, a hundred and thirty thousand tons of bulky waste. All of that should be recycled. The rate at which these items are diverted from our waste stream needs to increase significantly. At the Medfield Transfer Station, we provide many receptacles for these items, as well as channels for disposal outside of town via information in our brochure on the website, in the town website. Mass DEP is asking towns to work hard to educate the public and encourage them to be more proactive in ways to reduce their trash. The state distributes grant money to towns annually based on how we score on our efforts, and the Medfield Recycling Committee is responsible for that task. One project we've taken on is the purchase of Big Belly waste bins that use solar energy to compact trash in the bin, so that they hold five times the amount of a similar-sized waste barrel. The info wraps on these receptacles are meant to draw attention to our disposal habits and to call on us to keep the streets of Medfield clean, hence the Medfield Blue. Not everyone in town uses the transfer station, so we try to develop initiatives that reach everyone, and we feel the Big Belly bins can do that. Thank you for considering the approval of this project.
Where are the locations again, if you don't mind?
In front of Palumbo, on the corner, when you turn into CBS.
Okay.
And then right across the street at China Sky, and only, only a half of that is actually visible.
Right, thank you.
So I also wanted to show you some images of other Big Belly bins across the country, so. So tonight, I'm just here to sort of cross the Ts and dot the Is, because we didn't know we were supposed to do that the first time.
How dur- how durable is the material that's on the side?
It's actually, it's actually on, it's encased.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's.
So it's probably gonna be there for a long time, wasn't it?
We may or may not print the side panels right away. The most important ones are the recycling trash ones.
And again, there's, the side panels are the two that say recycle.
That's right, the black, yeah. And the back of them are just blank, just, just the thing.
I have no complaint. I think it's great.
Yeah.
I think it's wonderful. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
No, you answered it when I, because I was, uh, reading this. I couldn't figure out what we were actually approving, and now I understand what occurred and where you are, but, no, I think this is fabulous, nicely done.
And I believe that the sign committee, Matt McCormick, said that they weren't supposed to approve this. It was you. Is that true? Okay, that's why I'm here.
So then do we need a formal vote to approve it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, have a motion.
So moved.
All right, uh, second, I mean. I had to take, I did second before the other meeting where it was posted.
All is in favor.
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So Andy, I was surprised to hear, to hear you say that, that, that there are still five landfills in Massachusetts. I had no idea that we're still bearing trash.
Yep, but there's no plans for more. There's no plans for more landfills, and there's no plans for incinerators.
No matter how big they are, they're gonna fill up eventually, so.
So just food for thought. So we did, anything we can do, the state is very appreciative of anything that we do.
I know that Hillary Passas on the, uh, Energy Committee talks about the, uh, issue of waste, that we need to really focus on that as a town to meet our climate action goals as well, so. Thank you guys for what you're doing.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Look forward to using it.
Okay, uh, next, we have Jean Minio to discuss four different things. A vote to close Main Street, Route one oh nine, from the Route twenty-seven intersection to South Street at Brothers Market for the holiday stroll on December fifth. Second, Bell Forge to request a banner to be put on the fence at MS, uh, Medfield State Hospital, facing inside as part of their collaboration with the National Museum of Mental Health and their efforts to create a mental health and wellness trail. Third, vote to approve temporary easements for temporary power for construction at Bell Forge. And, uh, fourth, bid results and potential vote for approval of the general contractor for Bell Forge Arts Center. So, take it away, Jean.
So I'm here with Greg Tessa, President of Memo, Deputy McGrath. We've also spoken to Chief DeKang and Mogulay about closing one oh nine during the tree lighting and the holiday stroll to improve pedestrian safety, basically. Um, so we're here to ask if you have questions about that or concerns.
So we haven't done it in the past. We just had barriers, right?
Yeah, barriers.
So, so all, all these years up to now, we've allowed traffic to go flow through.
That's right.
Um, if we, so that starts around six and wraps up around?
Starts at five.
Starts at five, okay.
Goes to about nine. We'd probably wanna close it around four.
So that would be rerouting people going home from work on one oh nine. What would be the, the detour?
Well, I think you'd go north at. Well, I think you'd go north at Brook Street and south at South Street.
The chief is fully supportive, I believe the chief is actually the one who has been pushing for this list last year.
Really?
Yes. That's, uh, we're concerned about people walking back and forth during the holiday stroll.
She said it would help with putting the police on one oh nine to help people get across and make it a lot safer.
Yeah.
So then, um, not that, I mean, listen, it's all about safety, but would we be at least educating con, uh, commuters days in advance to know that they're going to be? Because what makes me more nervous about that is now you're sending cars through secondary streets that are used to going through the center of town. So now you're gonna have people using roads they're not familiar with, it's gonna be dark out, and people are gonna be out walking because they're trying to get to downtown. So I don't know if we, my concern would be, do we just make a dangerous situation more dangerous? Because at least going down one oh nine is a well-lit area. I, you're going down Brook Street to cut across, frayed or wind around to come up twenty-seven to then take a right on one oh nine near, near Dunkin' Donuts? Is that the workaround?
Uh, I, no, but I think, uh, a lot of the commuters are doing that now. Um, and we.
All right.
We looked at it last December and the December four, uh, December before that, and we don't have a lot of people anymore since COVID who work until five o'clock on Friday. So we see a, a lot lighter traffic pattern anyway on Friday, so that's why the chief thought it would definitely be doable.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted to ask this question.
Most, uh, you could put out signs the week prior.
But, but if we could at least warn people, because that would, that's, you know, again, it's the first, all these other events we've had, we just have people out to help with traffic. But if we can at least let people know, special event occurring Friday night, Ford or whatever, then that makes sense.
So we have, uh, all of our social media channels, in addition, uh, several of the news stations, uh, you can call in with any sort of traffic rerouting to them, and they'll report it as well, um, so we should have that covered.
Technically, can't we do it on Google Maps?
Yep.
So it's, so people coming down, if we are, if we really do do that.
That'll just be a temporary closure.
Then, then they'll know that, that the road's closed.
When you say the news outlets, will the town take care of that, or should we take care of that?
No, we can take care of that, yep.
Thank you, yeah. And then Chief DeKang just wants to make sure that he has access in the event of an emergency, which will coordinate with Barry's team.
Sure.
But sounds like we could probably do it with a cruiser that could get moved, so a fire truck could have access, or an ambulance if it was necessary.
Okay. Those are my questions, but obviously, I, I love the, the train of thought that's put behind it, so.
Yeah.
I think it's just a, a brilliant idea. Every, every year I get, I get anxious about the pedestrians and, and, uh, it'll make it so much nicer for your public that's coming to the event as well, so. I think it's a great idea.
Are you gonna make use of one oh nine by doing that?
Yeah, we'd like to have a lantern parade early with the kids to be part of it.
But I think like when we close down the roads for Medfield Day, like all of the road gets, gets, uh, used. So now if you're going to shut down the road, where I think of like everybody today kind of jams into, um, to Noonhill Grill, I mean, I'm thinking now, if they're aware that it's shut down, could they do the, the hot chocolate now in a more less jammed area and take more advantage of that, even with the food vendors going down the street?
And the police, the chief said she wanted to have a booth out there for, you know, information dissemination and all that, so we kind of talked about that a little bit, too.
That's great.
So just a couple of things. First off, I don't think we've had actual accidents with people in the past. This is a proactive thing, it's not a predic, yeah, it's not a, we're not fixing anything from the past, is that fair?
Right, yeah.
If, if we do this, um, I mean, I think it's pretty easy for sure to do it one, at least for one year, and if, if all of southeastern Massachusetts is mad at Medfield for four hours on a Friday night, maybe we learn a lesson, but otherwise, uh, I think, if, as long as we can work the traffic, that's great. The, the barriers that we have right now, does that mean we won't need them at all, or will we be using them differently?
Might want to still have some around the tree lighting on twenty-seven, because we wrap the corner, but we won't have to do.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. But we don't have to do it.
Yeah, and we, I, I talked to Bobby, it looks like we might be able to cut it in half.
Good.
Okay.
What we do, so.
I mean, I, I can see.
Yeah.
I can, I can see, like, talk about Noonhill Grill, when you're trying to get to the tree lighting and people are lined up for the hot chocolate and people are, you know, just at Noonhill Grill that having a little more of a lane to get around would probably make that nicer.
So will we stop traffic at Green Street and North Street so that people can't get up to the traffic light and all of a sudden realize that they can't cross?
I'm gonna refer that to the deputy.
Being short. Uh, yes, we would, we'll have, uh, the, uh, pretty much the same amount of detail officers. Um, will be there and they'll, will block traffic so that nobody's coming up onto, uh, onto Main Street.
Okay, so what's good about that is now you've just gained that much more foot traffic, because if we're not letting cars get into the center of town, right? I mean, the same will be true that, you know, as long as people, as they get to Oak Street, realize that they can't really go down Pleasant unless they're planning to park, because they won't be able to cut across at the set of lights. I mean, it's just, just, just to avoid, listen, we saw at the, at the, the holiday parade a couple of years ago, some nitwit cut right into the parade and literally his Girl Scouts, a Volvo, and then us, and I'm like, okay, who would be that stupid? So we know we have to plan for stupid.
I know the chief.
They didn't live in Medfield. Yeah, I could tell you a town there, but I wouldn't.
I know the chief's my boss, but I fully support her on this. You know, having the road blocked off and, and even having people crossing over, I was at the, the last one, and having the cars, you know, coming through, it's just, it's, this is, uh, I believe, a much safer, uh, alternative to it, and we'll make sure that the, uh, fire apparatus can get through if needed.
I just think it's great for you guys, you, that gives you a lot more to work with for that, that, the time span. Like even all the, the folks on North Street where, you know, usually Bee Charmed and all that get involved, now they can really get involved. Yeah, that's good.
Okay, uh, formal approval here again?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion?
Vote to close, uh, Main Street, one oh nine, from Route, from the Route twenty-seven intersection to South Street at Brothers Market for the holiday stroll on December five.
We want to modify that to also say, close North Street from Green up to one oh nine? Because we are.
I would, I would say, pending, I would like, take the recommendation, once they start to put their final traffic pattern in order.
Well, at the end of the day, if we don't say them, where people who watch us say them, if you're leaving North Street, so you can drive up to.
No, I don't think, I just want to make sure that, that you've had a chance to work out exactly what that traffic pattern will be on, on North Street.
Yeah, I spoke, I spoke with the chief about it, we're gonna come up with an operations plan. Uh, we have a general plan right now, um, but, uh, yeah, absolutely, we'll.
So, so it's gonna be revised, I'm trying to get it.
We might be able to approve it more generally, that we're approving the shutdown, the closing of the center of town for the holiday stroll, and, uh, the, the subsequent requirements to manage the traffic pattern that the police department recommends.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, second item, Jean, I think, is a request for a banner.
Yep.
It's a new one, I think, so.
So we would like to put a banner on the fence, we're starting to partner with this, um, National Museum of Mental Health, which is not a, they don't have a facility, but they're trying to develop a health and wellness trail that will go probably south of here up through Worcester. Um, and they'd like to just direct people, and the idea for the whole project was hatched at, um, the Medfield State Hospital back in twenty-seventeen. So they feel an affinity for the property and would like to just get some more visibility with the banner.
And is it, where the buses parked today, so facing into that?
Yeah, we would face, we would, we suggested that it would face our audience.
Okay.
So the backside of the fence, because when people are parked there for events, nobody can see what's on the fence anyway, unless they're on the other side.
Right. Okay.
That's all.
So that would be for the summer, so this is while you're there, you're talking about using the fence that way?
Yep. Yep.
And would the signs stay up all year or just during this, during the Belle Forge summer events?
Um, it could probably just stay up for the events, and then if it works and people are happy with it, we can come back to ask for permission next year when we come back.
Because that, well, so that's where I'm a little sensitive to making decisions that are longer term than just this.
Yep.
Because I don't think we want to turn, I don't think we're gonna want to turn that fence on the front lawn into looking like the fence in the outfield for the baseball field at Mediacoma, and that's where this would go, is, well, gee, if we got one, let's put another one.
Yep.
The next thing you know, you have a bunch. I, I kind of get why, if you're involved in working with this group, that you might want to give them some publicity, but there are museums that doesn't have a museum pushing for a trail that doesn't exist, so what is the, what is the banner actually doing? What is it? What's its purpose?
Yeah, well, I think it's to, um, you know, their goal is ultimately to educate and develop literacy on the topic of mental wellness. So it would be to help drive people to a website that could help with that.
So it's more, so, this is a little bit, I, what I'm trying to do is look for some consistency in how we make this decision, so I, I don't. I'm thinking that in years past, I think Medfield Outreach has come looking to put, put information on the trees that we've had there. I think it's on suicide prevention month, is what that one happened to be, but same, same basic idea, and we've been okay with us doing that during that period of time when there was relevance for it, so I can see rationale for okaying this. The, the, um, I'm a little sensitive, but one point, this health and wellness trail, is that a, is that like the, is that like the Freedom Trail sort of thing, or is it a hiking trail? And the reason I'm asking is because we get some blowback on looking at developing the land south of the hospital road, because we have a trail there, and it's like, wait a minute. That's not right, we never, we never committed something.
No, I think it would be, um.
This is a virtual concept.
It would be, it's virtual for now, but I think they want to connect key places that have a role, or have had a role to play in mental health and wellness. So it might be other state hospitals, it might be other locations that are relevant to it.
But it would be, it's not like a single hiking trail that suddenly becomes sacrosanct, this is that, oh, there's this, there's that, there's this, and they're all parts of the history.
Right, that's right. But they also want to promote getting people outside and into nature as part of health and wellness.
Not sure if I understand how that fits to, spots on a map, but okay, um.
We need to see this before it was up, or we're just.
Yeah, well, it's a, is it, is it an outrageously large banner, or is it a normal banner?
Have you seen it yet? I'm curious.
No, we're gonna design it.
Oh, you're gonna.
So we haven't, we didn't want to invest the energy unless we had approval to do it, and if you want me to show it to you before we go to print, I can do that.
I, I, you know what, just to, I didn't, the government is adding on there, and then I'm like, okay, we didn't request it, you've already printed it, now we got you in a bind, so is this a quick image, even if you were to send it?
Don't put any traffic signs on it.
Well, I mean, isn't that silly, but yeah, right?
No, that's, we, I learn something new every day.
I mean, I'm, I'm assuming this is a banner that, I don't know, it's not more than ten feet wide or something, it's, it's, it's gotta be on the fence, so.
No, six or eight at most. Yep, which is only like three feet high.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Pete?
I think the only thing that's in my mind is the time. I mean, you indicated that it wouldn't be a permanent installation, so that if you can maybe suggest a timeframe when you come back with the image for us to look at, so we can decide on both?
Yeah, well, I would probably do it, our last event is November first this year. So, we'd.
Your dates, I'm sorry, you cut out because of that fan.
Sorry, we, our last event is November first this year.
Oh, okay.
So we would do it till November first.
So if you put it up, it'll, yeah, hold November first. I, I don't think we're gonna leave it up per, permanently, but I, I understand.
Yeah, then we can store it and bring it back out next season if that's, if that works.
And that actually reinforces your concern, if it's like, no, Jean's putting it up because it's part of the Belle Forge area for now, right?
Right, that's my point.
And that's, that's, so, but then when you're closing down, that comes with it, so I think that's a good message.
And then go, you know, and on a more permanent basis, we've kind of, you know, your property that you're leasing is your property. So, right now, you're doing this on town property, but you're using that, so I understand why that's happening. I, what I don't want to do is get into sign, sign wars, if I can avoid it, but I can see a rationale for what you're trying to do here, if you think it's worthwhile.
Yep, thank you.
Motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Next is a vote to approve temporary easements for temporary power.
We know where they are?
We have, we don't know what we're approving.
No, so we will be engineering a plan to do that, where our VHB engineers are coordinating with Trinity's VHB engineers. It's the same company, so they can talk to each other, so that we don't place them anywhere near where they're gonna have infrastructure coming through. They also don't want them near the buildings, which I understand, um, so we'll coordinate closely with Trinity in the engineering of the design of it. But it's probably eight to ten telephone poles with the overhead, you know, powers.
So that's probably, we're gonna, we're gonna want to see that, what that, if, if we're gonna prove anything, we want to know what we're approving, but I think you already know, we've agreed, and, you know, our sentiment is.
Yeah, in principle, but yeah, yeah.
We want to, very much, I, I, I just don't know what we're approving, uh, literally.
Yes.
Are these the typical utility easements coming from like utility companies that the town?
It's just electric.
It's ever, ever source installing it, right? Ever source.
Yes.
So the town will be granting ever source a typical easement that they.
Yes.
Yes, there's gonna have to be poll hearings and a few other things, so, um.
The only thing that I would, because they have a form easement that they use, is to make sure that it's limited to town property and they don't use it as a conduit to go to other properties, which.
Yeah, uh, so we've involved, uh, Lisa Mead, and she's handling it, um, so we talked with Jean and said, um, what Jean would be looking for tonight was just the approval to move forward with beginning this design, talking to ever source, and then we can come back with a plan, um, but we're in the legal language and documents of our, even though it's.
Okay.
I mean, the fact that we've already approved moving, you moving ahead with early construction and, and Trinity's already got on board of that, we've already, we've already expressed that, I think, right?
Okay, well, this is your property, so I didn't want to make it, make the assumption that we could just install telephone poles.
No, no, no.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I mean, but we, we. Heck, we're letting you use it, that's probably more intrusive than the easement, uh, so, yeah. We, but before we, you know, if you wanted a formal approval of something, we kind of want to know what it is. Certainly, we want to know Trinity's good with it, ever source is good with it, you're good with it, and I can't think of anything that the town, any interest the town would have above and beyond that, but I'd like to see where it's going before we say we don't, because it's just.
Yeah, well, and Trinity thought it could be useful for their project, too.
Yeah.
In the short term.
Okay.
My only thought is that I hate telephone poles, and so that, uh, underground would be better in my estimation, but I'm sure that's a lot more expensive, so.
These are only temporary.
Correct.
They'll be, they'll be coming out as soon as we get utilities on site.
Yep. Exactly, right.
Are those gonna be underground?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that's, good, okay.
But our contractors can't work without the power.
And your fourth item, bid results and potential vote for approval of the general contractor for Belle Forge Art Center. Saw your write-up.
We're ready to go.
Any questions?
No, I mean, other than I think, um, I think the concern back when we've met throughout the last year, year and a half, is, um, as long as this contractor, I think you wrote it in the email, but I just want to make sure I read correctly what your intent was, is that they're going to look for the lowest wages, but they're not going to take a contractor that they don't believe can live up to the quality and safety that would, that would be required. So they may not end up taking the lowest bidder, if there's concern based on previous history and experience, that that would be detrimental to safety in the project.
That's right, and they understand the historic sensitivities, and they want to be able to find, work with the subcontractors that can meet that criteria.
Okay, yep, that's, I just wanted to, that was my only question, just wanted to make sure I read.
Yes.
And interpreted correctly, okay.
Yep.
I'm all, I'm set, I'm all fine.
So I had, if I read the write-up first off, that was the first sensitivity I had, was do these people actually know anything about rehab, but it sounds like they do. If I understood, I think it might have been your project manager that you said has worked with this company before, so there's some experience there.
Yes. Yep.
You put the solicitation out to multiple companies?
Six.
And how many proposals did you get coming back?
Four.
Four, and were, were they all kind of, how many of those four were disqualified just because they don't know how to do this stuff?
None.
So all four of them were?
So we pre-qualified the six contractors to, that could bid on the project. Two of them backed out before submitting their, submitting a formal proposal, four, we got four bids, and, um, narrowed it down to two, then we did interviews with them, and then also went through some preliminary value engineering with both of those firms, and, um, picked Delphi as our preferred contractor.
Okay, so that, uh, that, this is just professional curiosity and not anything else, is, so the criteria, you need, you pre-qualify people, so you knew that they were technically qualified to act in the area, your selection criteria was someone who's technically qual. If you're technically, if you meet our standard technical qualification, we're looking for the lowest cost consistent with people who have that skill set, is that? And then.
Somewhat, yep.
Then, w- once you had that, I, I don't know that you automatically just took the cheapest of the four qualified, it sounds like.
Correct.
There was a qualitative, well, qualitative side around there where you assess them on, like, maybe this one did a better job of identifying value engineering opportunities and things like that, or. I was just, I, it's truly professional curiosity, because I've worked in this space before, and it's like, uh, just trying to understand the criteria that you used.
Yeah, well, the first two priorities was historic, experience with historic and exte, experience with a theater space or something with, that was acoustically sensitive.
Okay.
And that, they all were able to meet that criteria. So that, those two were the first things that were important to us in order to allow somebody to bid on the project.
Okay, um, do you need us, you don't need us to approve this, do you, or? Okay, um, do you need us, you don't need us to approve this, do you, or this is your?
Oh, I think you do, because it's part of the lease.
Part of the lease is you have to approve the, the contract.
I forget which parts, okay, so, okay, then, can I have a motion?
What, who's the general contractor?
Delphi Construction.
I would move to approve Delphi Construction as the, pardon?
Well, them.
As the general contractor for the Belle Forte Arts Center.
Second?
Basically, it's the town's approving Belle Forte's use.
That's selection. Yeah, okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Jean.
Really, really exciting.
Really, you're telling me to. So we're still working on the value engineering piece, I hope the fence goes up in early September, but my board will, has some more work to do on evaluating that piece of it.
I assume the value engineering, you have the incentives all in the right place to.
Well, there's some easy, there's some easy stuff we can get rid of, like we were gonna put an amphitheater on the lawn, it's gone, but the.
Phase two, phase two.
Yeah, we'll get a grant for that, or a donor or something, but, you know, the, some of the things they were proposing would negatively impact the programming, and we can't do that. Like, don't build out the third floor of the infirmary, well, we're counting on those classrooms for revenue, so we're not gonna do that.
Right.
But there are some other things where contractors were suggesting substitutions, where the architects wanna make sure it's compatible with what they expect, and if it's not, we won't do it.
Yeah, yeah.
That kinda stuff, so it's gonna take us another two, three weeks on that.
Yeah, it is gonna be exciting to see what that gets turned into.
Good luck with it, that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, discussion item, and, well, I don't know if there's a vote here, but strategic ton weight and select board goal discussion, so Christina, you sent out the, the draft.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to give you all a little homework, um, so what you'll see is you have a marked up document which should reflect what we talked about in our workshop, so I went through and I.
You didn't, that's not what you sent out.
No, no, I sent you a different one, just to look at format.
Okay, got it, okay, okay.
Um, so this one, um, will draw your attention to some of the items that we discussed, of things we wanted to add, things we wanted to take off, um, some of the thoughts that were occurring when we were in the workshop. Um, because what, part of what, um, let me start back. So when we do our budget, we are doing goals-based budgeting, and one of the comments we received from the Budget Review Agency, the GFOA this year, was that they thought our strategic goals were really hard to understand, um, and that they were not laid out in an easy to understand format. Um, so it's hard for me to take this document and update it in this format, so what we did is we tried to create a new format for you, and we tried to streamline some of those goals, break it down into strategies, and then action items. Um, and I recognize when we did this document, um, several years ago now, we had a lot of input, um, and I think Gus did a tremendous job putting everybody's thoughts, and there were a lot of thoughts at the time, into that document. Um, so we've tried to streamline that, so what I'd like you to do is go back and make sure that what we reflected in some of the changes in the original one is what we talked about. Um, and we had a very robust workshop, so there is a chance that we were not taking notes fast enough, but please feel free to, to add in. Um, then what we did is, if you go through, we've just changed how this looks, um, and we're really trying to take your overall goals, come up with your strategies, which did not change when we ran the workshop, we did eliminate goal three and incorporate some of that into a new goal three. But for the most part, your goals stayed the same, what's changing is your action items and what the select board's goal and that is going to be moving forward. Um, this is not meant to be all encompassing of everything we talked about for items or strategies, so please feel free to add that in there. Uh, in addition, we have only received two emails from people with suggestions for the goals, I have not incorporated those in there, I figured we'd do that in our next meeting in September, we can talk about that. Um, and some of the feedback we've received from residents is they wanna see a document, then they'll comment on it. They said it's too hard to comment on something when they don't know if your goals are changing, uh, which I, is completely understandable and fair, so.
That's fair, yeah.
Um, just some homework, and we'll meet at our next meeting in September, and in the meantime, if you have any edits or wanna let me get, jumpstart on that, just send it off to me.
So, only because this is discussion, and this way Pete and Eileen can hear my quick rea-, just the very top level.
And these are the two emails?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually like the, the goal, strategy, action item structure that you went to, I, I think that's more focused, I, is the intent to ultimately also get to a table-like structure below all that, or is this, is this, is this what the structure?
So I think this is what the structure is we are looking at.
Yeah.
If you look at the GFOA and you look at the department heads, because the department heads should be developing their goals and their budget based off of your goals, that's where you'll see the table-like structure.
Okay.
Um, and these are not the, the little emojis that are going to regain or actually make them consistent, but I was trying to give you an idea of what we're doing because when the department head, say, TBW comes up with a tree planting plant, we will be using that emoji to match it up, so that people can see how people are matching their goals to our goals.
What I liked about this, if it's, if that's, I'm glad you said that, because it's like, what's nice about this is that for, when you're trying to get the long-term strategic goals, and you've got a document that takes it all the way down to what we're gonna do next year, it's like, that's the forest for the trees kind of issue that's hard. The other thing I liked about these is that I actually think we could have a discussion and just say, are these still the goals? And then if we agree that these are the goals, then we can say, okay, what should the key strategies be? So you can kinda tackle this at each level, uh, and, and get there. So that, that was just a quick reaction, I had, the only other comment I had, and this is only to throw this out to, the two of you just food for thought, not, not, it's not.
Yes, I am.
The things, as I went through it, and I know we all developed this, it's been around for a while, when I looked at it this way and this format, all I really did is I looked at the goals. As far as spent any time this afternoon after I got your email. And the things that jumped out at me is there's, I, looking at it this way, there's nothing focused on development of the town's youth, nothing focused on education per se, that's, you know, it may, I just didn't see it, it didn't jump out at me as a big thing. And there was nothing focused on promotion of commercial activities or ease of doing business with the town. So that was just me, top of my head, looking at the six goal, five goals, and saying, yeah, what's, so what's missing? I kinda came up with those things, so.
Uh, I, I agree with you, and I think what, one of the things that Brittany and I talked about last week is it is lacking a link to the recently completed strategic plan of the schools. So somehow we need to link this, and it might just be support the schools by your strategic plan, but that does need to be called out in here. Um, Kathy McDonald is reviewing this section, uh, on you, so we can update that, uh, so there is a section in there, you'll see that she's updating that. Um, one of the other things we talked about, we've looked at a lot of different towns and what they're doing for their strategic goals, and is whether or not you even include the action items on your strategic goals on the website. Are the action items what should become the select board goals, and then in turn, the town administrator goals? So I think the question is whether or not you include these action items as part of this document, or they become a separate document, so just food for, food for thought.
Yeah, okay.
Food for thought.
Food for thought. And it's also accessible to goals, you may not finish the log when you're just saying.
Yeah, and, and yet, that actually, even if you keep them in, we're probably gonna have to be clear about what the timeframe is for the action items that we're thinking of,
Yes.
because there, it's obviously not as long as the strategy, but it's something, so that's, that's a good point, yep.
So, a little homework for you for the next, uh, few weeks.
Pete, any questions, comments?
Nope, I gotta, I gotta kind of absorb this.
Yep, oh, yeah, yeah, no, we've been, we've been working on it since our meeting in June, kind of, it's probably had six or seven different iterations, um, since then, so. But this seemed to be the, the easiest to, to flow.
Comments?
I haven't really looked at it yet, so.
Happy to meet with everybody and talk about it one-offs, too.
No comments yet.
Right. All right, uh, then we'll move on to action items. First one is the board and committee appointments, the first is the three hundred seventy-fifth anniversary parade committee appointments. Uh, there are five of them, I think we can do them all, they're all for, I think, just one year. Uh, Jim Feeney, Lucille Fisher, Mark Fisher, Molly Slaney, and Bob, wait a minute, there's Costello, uh, where did, are these new ones?
These are new ones.
So Jerry Gazangin's already on it, okay, okay, got it, okay.
Already, yes, these are, these are new appointments, and I believe this is round out the committee.
These are the new ones. Okay.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, then, next item is a vote to accept the resignation of Steve Resch from the Board of Health.
So I'm gonna let you be sad for a couple of seconds that we've lost Steve from the Board of Health, and then I'm gonna tell you that Steve Resch has agreed to be our new and first Director of Public Health for Medfield.
That's awesome.
Yes, so we're very, very excited about this opportunity.
So out of the frying pan into the fire, but in a really good way.
We're just switching roles, I worked for him, and now he's gonna work for me.
Okay, can I get a?
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Is that contingent on him taking that job or something? Uh, third item, uh, vote to appoint Mark Fisher to the Capital Budget Committee.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Can you replace him? Uh, remember, I came off the committee, Andrew's come off the committee, so this should round it, uh, round out the committee.
Okay.
Let's make a comment on behalf of probably the three of us, it's, it's refreshing to see a former selectman actually still show up, still join the committee to help the town, so thank you, Mark. All right, next, uh, vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the Vertex Amendment for UPP Grant for abatement testing of the existing paint shop building, the, it's a two-part, it's an interesting thing, two parts, the, the first task is five thousand six hundred ten dollars, fixed price slash unit price, so basically, the fixed price is based on an assumption about the unit price for certain activities. If the number of activities increases, then the price is established. And then task two is a thousand dollars, uh, for basically a level of effort, I guess, for senior consulting support. So it's, it's kind of a intriguing structure, but it, it meets my criteria for not mixing fixed price and cost plus in an inappropriate way. Uh, any comments? And Pete, let me just finish with Pete, and then.
I'm fine.
Bill, go ahead.
So I had sent Christina no, kind of, I sent you another thing back, I have a concern with the statement of work. I mean, so if you read the letter that they sent in, basically, they're talking about testing for fluorescent fixtures and mercury switches and what have you, and that reads like what they would have done for a building, for, up, up at the campus, and they're gonna look for paint chips and everything else, you know, presumably taking the chips off the wall or whatever to see if it's lead paint or not. That's not what the paint shop is. I mean, the paint shop is a building that's essentially related to the rest of the salvage yard and everything else, and what I'd like to see, or like to know for sure, is that they're gonna be looking at, number one, the roof, which is probably asbestos, because every roof in the salvage yard was an asbestos roof. They should be looking at, were, was paint, remember, this was built in nineteen thirty. Were they pouring paint down a drain in the building? We don't know if there's even a drain in the building, I, I included some documentation of Andrea Stiller, who was our LSP during the, uh, the remediation of, of the yard, and basically, she wasn't sure whether it was just a grate on the floor, or whether it actually went into the ground. And I mentioned that because that's probably how we got into the, the CBOCs in the laundry parcel, where people dumping stuff down a drain, or dumping it outside the building. So I think they should be testing around, soil around the building to see if there's any lead paint there. Nineteen thirty, I gotta guarantee, almost every can of paint that they ever used, or mixed or anything else, had lead in it. So, so we ought to look at that, and I would also point out then again that when they did the salvage yard, they took out seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-six tons of asbestos contaminated material with lead in it as well. Now, I'm not saying that this is anything, perhaps, what's around the, the paint shop, but they should be looking at least at what's in the ground around there. And I'd like to see that in the statement of work, and not in the very broad description of what they would normally do for just a regular building, so. We have some experiences there, I have copies of the pre-remediation of the salvage yard, that says what was in the salvage yard, and the post-remediation that was there, nothing was done anywhere near, bless you, anywhere near where the paint shop is. So we ought to at least get something for our money, I mean, I would suggest that we just send my comments and get that revised to include that, that they are going to look at the roof, they are going to look at the whatever. I mean, I can't see that they're going to do that from their description in their letter of what their, what their scope of work is.
Christina?
I was just gonna ask if we can vote to approve it, subject to amending the, the scope of work in accordance.
I wouldn't do that, I would wait, and I would have to have the conversation with Trinity about that, I don't even know if ground sampling will be included in part of this grant application.
Yeah.
This is, this is grant funding, can you compete, I can't tell you if that's included.
I would suggest at least a conversation with Vertex as to what, what you can do and what, what can be done.
So this ties in with a couple, couple things on here, one, my first question was gonna be, so the way I read the scope of work is that this was a preliminary check, which made me, you know, Billy, all your points about the site are, are valid, but it made me think that the, the question was if we were gonna physically remove the building as opposed to completely remediate the site, what are the hazardous materials we're gonna be dealing with to completely remove the building? That was, that's just the way I read the statement of work. The fact that it was a UPP grant, and that, as I said, the statement of work sounded like it was identified as a preliminary assessment, I said, well, okay, it's probably scope to fit the size of the UPP grant, so when you start adding scope, you're gonna then wind up having to find sources of funding to do all that, but it didn't sound like this was really designed to be the be-all and end-all, it was just.
I think it's a preliminary assessment, and I think it's fair to say that Trinity was listening when we did our site visit in the fall, and they said, the town should really take down the building, we said, oh, really, Trinity should take down the building, and everybody said, we don't know what it costs. So I think this is just them listening, doing the preliminary analysis to say, what is the cost, and depending on that cost, is that something Trinity's gonna offer to us, or is that something we have to think about in the future?
I, I just would point out, though, taking down the building is the easy part, the hard part is disposing of, properly disposing of any asbestos-related material or anything else, so.
I, I think we knew, when we were out there that day, that was what people were talking about, we all kind of agreed, like, there's definitely stuff in those.
You need to get a little bit more than just, just a broad brush or whatever, I mean, 'cause I could go in there right now and tell you there's probably three fluorescent light fixtures, and probably three mercury switches and everything else, I, that's.
But if it's preliminary, that is not okay, it's not the final, if they're just trying to go in and figure out what is this monstrosity, and how ugly is it gonna be, then it's their way to say, okay, we've got, we've got, I'm gonna, I figured the sum is there, but they've got a limited amount to at least kinda get their feet wet.
But, but think about this, I mean, they're gonna take fifty bulk, bulk samples in a building, that's what, maybe six hundred square feet or five hundred square feet, I mean, that's in there.
Smaller than this room.
Yeah.
Oh, definitely smaller than this room.
I mean, probably as big as this front row of seats up, up to the, that's even bigger, probably smaller than that. So I guess what I'm saying is, you ought to get as much as you can, because if you're gonna make a decision on tearing something down, don't wind up getting surprised that right around the foundation or under the foundation, you have, you're gonna have to get rid of forty, forty square yards or forty cubic yards of contaminated soil or anything else, at least get what you can for the money you wanna spend.
So, so this, so who is it that Vertex is working for on this contract? It's a UPP grant?
UPP grant and contractors with us.
And who from the town is gonna be the direct, is gonna be directing their work?
Trinity has been directing all of the UPP work.
That's what my, so Trinity is actually directing this, so.
I think, I think. Trinity would love to have the building down, and you saw my, my original comment, which basically said, I'd love to see the building go, I've been trying to get rid of it for ten years.
Sure.
I think they're trying to figure out if they can afford to do it.
That's, well, that's, what, so when we have the, when we have the site.
They're not gonna know if they don't know what's there, I guess the other thing that I'm saying, so at least.
Well, I think.
Just try to broaden the scope of work, that's all I'm suggesting, and I don't care how broad you make it, but they ought to at least be looking at the roof, they ought to at least be doing a quick sample around the, around the building, of the soil sample around the building. If there's asbestos in the soil around the building, everybody's got a problem with that.
Right, so they, so, at least the way I'm looking at it, right, I mean, I think, Bill, your advice is well-taken. I think it makes sense to pass that advice on to Trinity, and then Trinity still has to figure out how, how, how thin they're gonna spread the peanut butter to deal with all the issues. The, what I, what I don't think, I think Trinity was, when we, when we met with them, at least as I recall, they were basically, we, we were, we weren't playing cagey, because we're not prepared to put town money into taking down and remediating that site right now, it's on our property, but we're not prepared to do anything, so what Trinity said is, well, we might be able to just do that. We probably were sort of hoping they would say that, because their timetable for doing it is probably faster than our timetable for doing it.
And they're gonna be working there, they're gonna be working there as they do with their construction activity, because they have a couple of drawings that actually show
Right.
that it's outside of their project delineation, but they are in fact going in there, they're taking a tree down in there and everything else, and that. That it's outside of their project delineation, but they are in fact going in there, they're taking a tree down in there and everything else, and that paint building is right there, I mean, so I understand.
They don't want residents looking out at it, I mean, it was a very clear message to us, that's, that's not gonna be.
You ought to know that if they're gonna tear it down, if there's gonna be a serious problem there, or at least a significant problem that was quickly found or whatever, you ought to at least know what's there. Cause now you got a hole in the ground that's, that possibly leaking asbestos.
Well, we're not gonna let them take it down without full.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so you need something.
And me, where I'm coming from, Bill, is I don't wanna find out in a year that the town is suddenly on the hook to undertake a remediation project that we didn't wanna have to take on. That's the, that's what I'm being cautious about, so, in other words, there's not, presumably, there's not more money to do more scope if it's just expanded scope. There might be, I think what you're saying is, well, for whatever the money is you have, make sure it's the smartest scope you can have at hand.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
That's, that's all I'm saying, and I, and I can make, I have, I can provide links to all of the prior work that was done there. I mean, I've got pages and pages of, I mean, that was my, uh, PIP, my original PIP, I mean, so, I mean, I know that. So again, I'm just trying to help and I'm just trying so there's no surprises for anybody here. And I, again, I also called out the things that if you take it down, what you're gonna have to do to take it down, just to get on the record, so you know that you're gonna have to go through, um, you know, historic and get historic approvals and everything else.
So in light of this discussion, I think for tonight, I think we can approve the contract, recognizing that advice needs to go to them. They're gonna do what they do, they're gonna find out what they find out. I don't think anything's coming down before a follow-up, more detailed assessment is made. So to Bill's point, there's probably a smarter and a dumber way for to use this early amount of money on this UPP grant to find out as much as you can possibly find out. I think we can approve the UPP grant, uh, in the interest of, of expediting this process and, and pushing it along, but.
Objection to that.
Okay.
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 So a complication at the paint shed is that it has the most robust stand of Japanese knot weeds surrounding it, so that, and that's not a innocuous invasive, unfortunately. So I'll, uh, move this, uh, to authorize that the town administrator signed the Vertex Amendment for the UPP grant to, for abatement testing of the existing paint shop building.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's approved. Next, we have vote to sign the annual intermunicipal agreement with Hopkinton, Milton, Norwood, Randolph, and Sharon for this, okay, here. So it's, sign the withdrawal from the existing annual in, intermunicipal agreement with Hopkinton, Milton, Norwood, Randolph, and Sharon to recognize Randolph's withdrawal from that agreement and sign the new agreement that adds Medway as one of the partners. So there's actually two, I think there's, do both agreements have to be signed? I'm trying to remember, I looked at it, and, or is it that one of them is a addendum to, like, the sec, the new one gets, comes into a, the withdrawal of the old amendment comes into effect upon signature of the new amendment. Is that a single contractual thing, or is that a double? For some reason, I was thinking that one of them had signatures on it and the other one didn't.
Uh, we need to sign the termination.
Yep.
And we need to sign our new extension.
Okay, and on both of those, is that?
They are me.
It's you, okay, so sign termination and ex, and, uh, I guess as an extension?
I don't know why Randolph wanted to leave, um, we talked about it so much and how great it was, Medway, uh, asked to join, so, it's been really gracious.
Yeah, okay. Everybody follow what I just said there?
Yes.
Yep, so moved.
I'll send them.
This is authorizing the town administrator to do these signatures. All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Uh, next is vote to sign the amended shared streets contracts. Oh, uh, can I, I had one, before we get off of this, this is a trivia question. Why does exhibit B, I think it was, indicate that Medfield's contribution is conditional to Norfolk County approval?
I had a highlight, Brittany said, you're, uh, Gus is gonna ask you this question. We paid ours with Arveline, so we had to, when we signed it last time, we had to make sure that it was contingent upon Norfolk County, and they did, so, but.
So it's, it's a pro, that's a pro forma point that doesn't matter, okay.
Nope, I'll send.
Brittany knew I was gonna ask about that.
She knew you were gonna ask her that, she wrote it in.
I thought it was gonna get explained, that's why I didn't even, I was like, okay.
She left me a note.
We're all good.
Oh, she's gotten really good since she's become the assistant town administrator, I gotta say. Wow, I am impressed, I don't know, I, I was duly impressed that she actually read me that well, okay. Uh, vote to sign the amended shared streets contracts with Beta to extend the contract through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
My question was just why.
Uh, we haven't finished the work and the, the current contract expires on August twentieth.
So moved.
And it, and it, there's no cost implication, this is just per form.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay, that's approved. Next is vote to sign the contract with Southworth Milton Inc. for a new CAT four forty backhoe loader for one hundred seventy thousand dollars. Uh, Mo sent this to me ahead of time, I reviewed it, uh, and, uh, I thought it all looked fine in the details, so.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay. Next is, uh, vote to sign the contract with McGovern MHQ Inc. to remove the existing body and furnish and install a new, it should say two to three CU slash YD. I think it's, I think that's a long way of saying cubic yard.
Yeah.
Uh, stainless steel dump body for twenty-two thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars. I actually had one observation, one question. First off, what is this stainless steel dump body, uh, does anybody know?
It's the back of the truck.
Back of the truck, yeah.
Oh, it's just, it's like a dump truck?
It's literally the dump truck.
So it is just two to three cubic yards?
And what's the model?
I think it's one of the small.
Little tiny things, okay. And then I got a kick out of paragraph ten of the, of the contract, our contract, that said that the, uh, the standard of care that's required is that, that's associated, that is expected of a, quote, "truck with stainless steel dump body sales industry," close quotes. So I had no idea that a stainless steel dump body was an industry unto itself.
Yeah, they've got their own magazine, I'm sure, too.
I'm sure we might have it in the office.
And the conventions are just wild.
Might be where Mo is now.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay, that one's.
The question is, how much did that save us versus having to buy a new truck, right? That's, that's.
Sure it does. Uh, let's see, the next one, vote to sign the contract with Bay State Interpreters for translation and interpretation services funded by the Drug-Free Community Grant. I did have several, a couple of questions. One is, uh, has the work already started? Because the period of performance says it's one July to thirty September. And the reason I'm asking that is it.
On-call is needed.
Huh?
I believe they're on ca, on-call is needed.
Uh, well, that adds, that leads to another question, cause it basically said, it said that exhibit A was included for scope and pricing. But I don't know what the total value of this contract is. It's not that, it didn't say it anywhere.
Let's see, I can ask Kathy, Kathy sent me a note, cause she's actually at the Medfield Housing Authority meeting tonight. She said, our contract with Bay State Translation Services, this is to have our most widely-used prevention materials for caregivers be translated into both Spanish and Portuguese. I did not ask her what the cost of the total is.
So the interesting thing about that is they have a full table of translation services, but most of their services are live translation in conversations, there's just one item at the back.
Funded by a grant, though.
Sixteen cents per word.
I did discuss that with her when she ran the draft by me.
Okay, so there was, cause there's nothing in the contract.
Cause I talked about putting a not-to-exceed figure in there.
Yeah, well, that's, that was my point, is that right now, this is a blank check, now, maybe it's not in terms of how, but the legal document.
So.
I just texted her real quick to see if she's available.
Let's, let's defer that, let me get an answer back on that one. Let's move to the next one, vote to sign the co, uh, contract with Safe Coalition to assist Medfield outreach with opioid abatement work. And I gather that that's Narcan training is what we're talking about.
Yeah, so she said, um, in terms of my Safe contract, we are using opioid abatement funds for this contract, which will allow monthly consultant, consulting for our newly-hired opioid counselor, Kim Nordgren, by Jen Levine, who's the co-founder of Safe. This will also allow for the development of services to be modeled after Safe offerings here in Medfield. You may recall we use Safe to help us with our survey, key stakeholder meetings, and listening sessions. Also, Safe will provide Narcan trainings in our commuting, community, this was something that was supported and sought in our survey findings. This will also give us time for our own public health nurses to become certified, so we can offer these independently in the future.
Okay, so that answers the other question I had, that, it sounds like the scope is a little bit bigger than what I read. And the only question I actually had around Narcan training is, why can't our police department or fire department, you know, ambulance services do that if we need? It's a hun, it's, it's not, it's like a hundred fifty dollars a month, so I'm not, I, I wouldn't stop this, but I was just curious, uh, so, we can vote on this and approve it uh, because it's a very minimal contract, uh, but I, I was kinda curious, why don't we use the police or fire to, if, if Narcan training was, was the issue?
I think that's on minor part of it, I think the other's getting our opioid consultant up to speed. Going back to the other contract, Kathy said it's gonna be about seven thousand dollars.
Seven thousand, okay. Let's do the, let's do the Safe one and then go back to that one, so, uh, any questions, comments, or otherwise a motion?
Move to sign the, yes, contract with Safe Coalition to assist Medfield outreach with opioid abatement work.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved, then let's go back up to the other one, we've already talked about.
Contract with Bay State Interpreters for seven thousand dollars for translation and. Or not to exceed. Not to exceed, seven thousand dollars for translation and interpreters, interpretation services funded by the drug-free, drug-free community grant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, vote to sign the contract with Talte Floors for the COA carpet for twenty-one thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars. This is also a contract that I, Ben forwarded to me and I reviewed and it looked okay.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay, and next is vote to sign the time and materials contract with JS Masonry for on-call masonry. Period of performance a three-year contract, runs from August tw, today, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, to August twelfth, twenty twenty-eight. I also reviewed this one and it looked okay.
So my questions on this were, uh, I didn't see a total amount, I just saw hourly rates, only pay for. Cause they're an hour, they're on-call is needed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which will, um, Rob has assured us will save us money to have an on-call contract rather than just going out and hiring somebody on one-offs for each project. Um, and we are finding we have more and more masonry work, um, obviously, some of our buildings.
We had some electrical work done recently and the electrician had us pay them money so that they would put us on their list where they would come when we needed them. Sounds like similar sort of thing.
Sounds like what we're doing here.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay, next, we have contract, vote to sign the contract with Serta Pro Painters for the DPW Salt Shed Painting for twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollar, seven hundred ten dollars and sixty-two cents. This is also a contract I reviewed, and I, I even looked really closely at it, said, what the heck, why does it cost that much to paint a salt shed? But if you really look at the salt shed, there's parts of it that are wood, it's, it's actually, and you have to re, you have to redo, you have to take care of the surface to prepare it, so it was all, I was convinced that this is a good price for repainting a salt shed.
It includes minor repairs as well.
Right.
I, I would like to point out, this is, um, a perfect example of Rob Quinn, our new facilities director, and Bo doing preventative maintenance, so that we don't find out ten years from now we need an entirely new salt shed. So, uh, I think I, I'm completely in love with our new mindset on this.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, next, vote to sign the contract, time extension addendum with AECOM for the townhouse windows.
Uh, and we're just delayed because there's a supply issue and we haven't been able to get the windows.
And this is for technical services?
No, this is for the actual, uh, replacement of the windows, uh, on that side of the town hall and the back lower floor.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kinda funny, cause.
From the, it wasn't Green Communities, it was the other, granted, I can't think of the name of it, it's a weird name.
It's, it's kinda strange, cause the AECOM I know is a recruiting company. It's like, what are they doing, doing townhouse windows, but.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, next, vote to sign the Sersgi contract for office supplies with WB Mason, and, uh, you guys noticed this, but what's interesting is that the first contract we're gonna talk about with WB Mason is the contract that awards off of the office supply, to be the office supplier for us, and then the second one is the paper order. So it was sort of, so I guess you gotta hire him to be your official office supplier before you can place any orders.
Aye.
So.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next one, as I just said, is again, another cert, vote to award the Sersgi paper contract to WB Mason, now that we've made them our office suppliers.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that takes care of all of our.
We're all getting new pens tomorrow.
The, uh, uh, next we have four, make sure it's just four, I think it is, just four items on the consent agenda. Uh, first one, vote to approve the one-day beer wine request from the trustees at Rocky Woods Reservation for the Rock the Woods Outdoor Music Festival on August thirtieth from twelve to five P M. Second is vote to approve the Bike to the Beach for Autism Charity Bike Ride taking place on Saturday, September thirteenth. And I noted that the information they sent to the town said that they probably will be on the roads at six-thirty in the morning, that Saturday morning, and it shouldn't take them more than a, an hour to clear. So that seemed pretty non, non-intrusive. Uh, third, vote to approve the sign request for Medfield Youth Basketball advertising the opening of the registration period at, now, these are the sign, uh, they're, I've gotta just point out, these are sign locations that are not, not all are usual sign locations. Route twenty-seven and South Street, North and Main, and Route one oh nine in Harding Street. So that's, it was a different set of locations, I don't think there's any problem with any of them, but that usually we get the requests at the usual locations.
Yeah, so we, I will double check on the usuals, Route one oh nine in Harding.
Route one oh nine in Harding is.
They don't, they, they don't be, just, no way.
They, actually, they don't, yeah, you're right.
That's, that's just a typo then, it's gotta be, um.
Hartford.
Hartford.
Oh, that's.
Hartford.
It's gotta be Hartford.
Yeah, Hartford, yeah, you're, thank you. So, let's, we will.
With all the road construction we have, who knows? It could end up being one oh nine in Harding.
Okay, so, so it's three locations, Route twenty-seven and South Street, North and Main, and Route one oh nine and Hartford. Okay, that makes more sense. And then the fourth item, uh, vote to approve the block party request for Thirty-Seven Indian Hill Road from three to seven P M on September twenty-seventh. But my question is, where's the request, I didn't see anything, uh, don't know who it is.
There was no document just that, they were making the request.
Oh, I'll send, it's in.
Is that Medfield Day, is that typically what they?
No, that's later than.
September twenty-seventh, yes, that's Medfield Day.
It is?
Yes, it's late this year.
Will I move that?
And that's, um, and that is an annual one we get every year from that neighborhood.
But we don't know who's actually, we're, we're not approving.
Who's responsible for it right now?
I mean, we, we can reprove it, we'll, we'll be meeting before the twenty-seventh to approve it, but.
Yeah, that's, yeah, told me to look at it.
I'll have to, I'll have to look up and see who it is, but I can recognize it as one of our annuals.
We'll defer that one, and they have time, so, okay.
I would move the, uh, prior three items on the consent agenda then.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hold on.
Any gifts?
Yeah, then, what comes next? This looks like a big agenda, but I saw all those contracts and I looked at most of them, it was like, all right.
Two hundred and twenty-eight pages, but thank God a bunch of them.
Do we have any citizens that wanna comment?
Okay, moving right along.
Moving right along, uh, no meeting minutes, town administrat, town administrator updates.
I have quite a few, but I'm gonna keep them very brief.
That's okay.
Um, so it's been a really busy, uh, summer at the townhouse, um, we call it our interview era, because we have spent literally every week interviewing for our open positions. Um, we submitted, uh, two weeks ago, we submitted the fiscal year twenty-six GFOA, uh, so we should hear back in October on that award. Um, we attended the fire pinning ceremony, which is the first time we've ever done that, um, in the history of Medfield, and it was just absolutely fantastic, um, I know.
So moved.
I know you guys had to miss it, but it was, uh, it was really great, and we really look forward to making it a tradition, um, I'm really happy that, uh, Chief DeKing, uh, went forward with that. Um, Brittany and I attended National Night Out at Ankle Pond, and I just wanna, uh, shout out to Katie and the chief for just a tremendous, uh, turnout. Um, we were shocked, um, disappointed, it was a two-and-a-half hour wait for pizza, so we had to go somewhere else, but that was just a, a sign that it was just overwhelmingly attended, so, absolutely amazing. amazing. Um, I'm very pleased to report that we've already issued four thousand Medfield Transfer Station stickers, um, which is a record at this point in the year. So I appreciate that, especially with the transition to our new Open Gov system. Um, everybody was super kind. It helpedful in getting that moved forward, so I appreciate that. And huge shout-out to Sarah and Jess for giving out four thousand stickers. So it's been great. Um, Citizens Academy, the deadline is coming up. There's only a few spots left, so you have until August twenty-six to sign up for that. Um, we are getting ready to kick off our tree planting and we have partnered with Levels. This was our ARBA tree planting project. We'll be doing a lottery for red or sugar maples. Um, details will follow, so keep an eye out for any applications for that. Um, and I do, I, she promised, I, she made me promise I wouldn't say anything until she retired, but I would like to say, um, that we wish Susan Cronin a very happy retirement. Her last day was last Friday. Um, she doesn't work for me anymore, so she can't do anything to me now. I'm thanking her. Um, it was, it's hard to believe that sixteen years went by, um, since she started working here. She was just a tremendous employee, tremendous friend to me, and always I can guarantee you when my phone went off at five-thirty in the morning, it was Susan with a picture of the state hospital and there was something that needed to be fixed. So she was my eyes and ears at the state hospital and I'm, uh, forever in her debt to that. So we wish her an incredible amount of, uh, luck and happy in her retirement.
If I could, I will vouch for the Cronins being wonderful neighbors, because they've lived next to us for the thirty years that we lived in. They moved in a month or two before we did and, uh, we were very sorry to see them go.
There are actually a lot of new faces at the town hall, so please feel free to stop in, say hello. Um, I know Brittany is going to focus, uh, all of them in the next Town Administrator Newsletter, but, um, it's been great. It's new crazy vibe downstairs, so come in and see it.
Will any of them come to the recognition night or the volunteer's night if they, did
I don't know if they'll come to the volunteer night, but we are trying to get
you?
them to a meeting in September so that you can put names and faces together. Um, I do have one bit of sad news. I was just notified this afternoon that we did not get the Green Communities grant to do the townhouse chiller. Um, so I talked to Susan McPhee and she's going to do a little more investigation as to why we weren't picked. Um.
I don't know if it's chiller.
Yeah, the boil, basically essentially the boiler.
Oh.
Um, uh, we were shocked we weren't picked, so she's going to do a little more investigating as to why that did not happen. Um, and then one thing I want to talk about, um, I had a concern from a resident who was upset with Parks and Recreation and felt that they didn't ask for enough money for the modular, or that Park and Rec had done something wrong. And I just want to make it clear that Park and Rec requested the money that we advised them to. Uh, all of our bids, uh, and the contractors we were talking to, uh, told us to plan on the hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar, which is what we asked for at town meeting. Um, those bids then came over, came in at over a half a million dollars, um, including one from a company that we had, had some active negotiations with on that. So I just want to say that it's, it is not Parks and Recreation's fault that the modular did not move forward this summer. Um, and they are actively working with the Facilities Department to try and find, uh, both a short and long-term solution. Um, and, you know, spending a half a million dollars for one year was not in the interest of anybody. Um, so we're going back to the drawing board and we'll, we'll be back at next year's town meeting with some other ideas.
But I think it's safe to say the feedback from the residents that are using Parks and Rec have been really positive, at least from what I've picked up from kids, friends that have kids in the programs and just, it's all good. Nope.
It's all worked out. And again, thank you to Jeff and Michael and the school committee for, uh, making that happen for Park and Rec. It's been super helpful. That's it.
Okay. Uh, next, meeting dates. We're going to be back to our two-a-month cycle. It's been pretty nice this summer.
I'm not going to complain, I know.
Uh, in September, meeting on September sixteenth and thirtieth. In October, we're meeting on the seventh and the twenty-first. In November, meeting on the fourth and the eighteenth. And in December, the second and the sixteenth. And subject to other major events in town forcing us to come in more frequently than that. Select Board member reports.
Well, I, uh, I've been busy with things that have nothing to do with the town unfortunately, uh, because I broke my wrist, I had surgery, um, so I've, I was so bummed I missed the, the swearing in and promotions.
I know.
I, if I just could, I, my, my wrist, I'd just come out of surgery and I was miserable. Um, and then I had just gotten like my settings off, uh, on August fourth and I missed the nights out on August fifth. Uh, but both events I did here were fantastic, so I sit here now with trying to get my hand to move again.
I know. You need to get it home.
So, I, I will wear a brace when I drive, just God for anything happens, but otherwise I'm trying to get this thing so it's not so stiff.
Pete?
The Medfield Foundation had a meeting this past week and selected Abby Marble as the president, uh, going forward. Peter Feldman's going to be the vice president, uh, and I think, well, who's the treasurer then? I'm not sure. And, uh, Leanne LaBelle is going to continue on as the clerk. Um, plans were made for, uh, Medfield Day and for the Angel Run. I had my office hours, uh, a couple of weeks ago and Sandy Glue came and, uh, she's one of my regulars that, that meets with me there. Um, Bob Costello, who is Andy Costello's husband, who was, Andy was here tonight, um, sought me out because he wanted to talk about town lands. Bob is actually a, a ranger for the trustees, and so he's out in the town lands, on the trustees' lands in the town all the time, in the woods. Um, and he had some ideas about how to maybe help, when he needs to get things done on trails or things to, to get a group of people that might be interested in helping out on that type of thing, to crowdsource basically some, uh, some projects on the town lands. I, I just happened upon when I was, was out on, I think it was Sunday, it was one of the weekend days, the Norfolk Hunt Club was running something they called a pace, I think it was, at the Norfolk, at the Medfield State Hospital former grounds. And, uh, there were just more horses and, and horse trailers than I'd ever seen in my life. Um, and I guess the, the concept of a pace is that the horses, they seem to start in teams and they seem to start at, at set intervals. And then the idea, as they explained it to me, was that you, you ride at the right pace. I don't know how they figured that out, but there's sometimes when you walk, sometimes when you canter, and sometimes when you gallop and, and clearly it's very popular because there was a huge number of people. I think they raised some money, hopefully, for their, their, uh, maintenance of their lands. Um, and then the last thing I would mention is that I know the Conservation Commission, on sort of a very emergency basis, um, got notified by the former, um, the consultant that, that used to be the agent Bob Hartzell, who was just excellent, that he'd noticed water chestnuts at Kingsbury Pond and Flynn's, Flynn's Pond. And so members of the Concom got out in, in canoes and kayaks. I know that we now own a kayak. Um, and they, they hand-pulled it. Um, and, uh, I think it was, uh, John Woodfall and, uh, and the surgeon.
Well, the new Nick Taro, the new member, the newest member.
Yes, uh, was there and Deb was there, uh, Barrow. So thank you to them for doing that. And that's it.
Okay. And, uh, we had the Medfield Energy, basically the Medfield Electricity Program met, uh, on the fourteenth of July. They've been work, we've been working on pulling the information together about how the, uh, the Medfield Choice ener- the energy has been, how that program's been going. And it's got, they've got, we've got some really interesting, both cost savings, but also from an energy or environmental standpoint, carbon reduction. Uh, and we're working to get some information that'll be available for people at Medfield Day. Uh, so, uh, certainly kudos. I, I'm just the strap hanger. These, it's Megan and, uh, you know, the, the leaders of the, the people in the committee.
Home Organizer.
Yeah, yeah. That actually are the ones who are doing all the work, along with Good Energy, because they, they do a lot to support us. Uh.
And it's just huge numbers of.
Yeah. It is.
Whatever it is, it's very big numbers, but they're saving, that we're saving.
Uh, let's see. The, I had a number of informal conversations since our last formal conversation about the Parks and Rec, uh, development, uh, south, south of Hospital Road. Uh, and, and so I've had some time to think about that. Uh, and I think what this is, I'm putting the bug in the two of your ears. The one thing that I think we probably can do that's useful is, in the fall, take a look at identifying what the twelve acres of developable land would actually be, south of Hospital Road designated, because otherwise, uh, there are too many miscellaneous objections that are sort of hypothetical objections. So, uh, I'll bring, that's just advanced warning that that's probably a topic we ought to take on in the fall.
Yep.
At least figure that out so that whenever we find a path ahead or whatever we're doing, we're not, we don't become the gate.
And we can move on the feedback versus not getting feedback, but the wrong thing to do.
Yep. Uh, and Christine, you didn't mention, but you, Steve Callahan and I had a meeting that I thought was very helpful back at the end of July. Uh, you, you should know that the Warrant Committee to, to, I'm quite happy to see, and certainly Steve Callahan as a co-chair is, uh, doing yeoman's work to try to get out in front of things, but we know the town's going to have a huge school project, uh, coming up. I don't think we're going to get out from it being a big project. The only thing that we clearly can try to do is to be as smart as possible about how we get it financed. And Steve's been doing a lot of early, uh, kind of modeling of what those possibilities would be, so that when we do get to the point where we have to start looking at that, I think the Warrant Committee and through Steve's help, uh, I will be a little smarter and better prepared for those conversations than would otherwise be the case. So Steve's done a great job on that. Uh, and then finally, I also went to the Fire Department swearing-in ceremony and, uh, it wa- it was a great thing that Chief DeKing did, has introduced, uh, and I was really impressed at the turnout. I mean, there were a lot of, there were a lot of people that were getting recognized, but big thi- you know, families, uh, you know, the things I was impressed with is how many of those new firefighters had their mothers or their fathers pin them. And it kind of, it kind of, it impressed on me that this is a big deal. This is something to be really proud of. Uh, and, you know, it becomes more apparent when you see a family show up, or in some cases, the kids clapping their fathers on the back. Uh, so it went both ways, but it was, it was a nice event.
It was very nice.
Uh, and I think that's, oh, yeah, Mark.
So you held open that, uh, solicitor's hearing?
Yeah.
Home something.
And they're not here, right? Thank you, though. Well, actually, I didn't. I never opened it.
Oh, that's true.
That was, that was the mistake I made today that worked out well.
So just let it go?
Yeah.
Yeah, we never really opened it and they didn't show up, so.
Okay. That's fine.
Let me, before, just, in that they didn't show up, this is the second time they haven't shown up, uh, I want to just throw a couple of questions out there. Probably you're the only one that's going to benefit because they're not here. Uh, I'm, I'm a little surprised that our town needs eight people to cover whatever it is they do. One of my questions for them is, how many projects have you guys actually done in this town? Because it seemed like an awful lot of people, uh, they're requested time. They didn't really give us an answer to that. They said for the duration of the permit. So I guess we're going to tell them what their time is. If that's not what they had in mind, they ought to come in with some better information. Um, they were, there were several of these that actually had July ninth, the date filled in at the bottom of the application for the date of approval. Now, there's no signature of the, of the select board. The reason I homed in on that is that back in early July, I wound up having a conversation with someone, I don't remember who it even was, who talked about somebody approaching them on the street soliciting. And I said, we don't have anybody. Who was it? And they said, well, I don't know who it was. So it's an innocent, you know, I'm not accusing anybody, but I'm curious whether some people just assumed that they had an approval on the ninth of July that nobody showed up for. Uh, the other thing that, uh, there's a couple of these applications here that I noted, uh, that, that, again, this is an innocent question. I'm not accusing anything. That some of their, uh, car licenses are from out of state, Maine, Connecticut, and I think one was even maybe Georgia. I, I'm just assuming then these people must be living temporarily in the Northeast. I, I just was curious.
My bedroom's cool up there.
Uh, and there's one that doesn't have any, it, it says they own a car, it says what kind of car, and there's no license information whatsoever. So that's an inadequate application. So they were going to wind up, reluctantly, I was going to be asking them some sort of tough questions, because I don't think they did a very good job of actually filling these things out in a way that gives us the information. And it's not that hard to form, so.
Do, do I have a recollection that, that Brittany tweaked the policy or was going?
We've completely changed the policy. We have a new soliciting list. Uh, we've had quite a few people sign up for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Chris put it in her, her newsletter. Uh, but I, I, I don't know why my house is the house that I get knocked on all the time. I usually, I'll say, you guys, hey, you definitely picked the wrong straw here, because I see him on the select board and I know you haven't been in front of me and you, I said, so like you really, and I, I can't tell you how many people I educate. I swear to God, it's almost like once a week. It's like you can't be out in town doing this. Um, so I, I, I sent some of these people doing it anyways.
Is there a list of people who are authorized to solicit?
Yes, yeah.
Zero, right? Now, it's an empty list right now.
I want to talk to you about somebody who just came down my driveway two days ago.
So then what you, we would ask, we have nobody authorized right now.
Nobody.
We are asking when that happens, that you call the police station and let them know and they're going to send somebody up and they're going to find them.
But see, the problem is not knowing at the time that he was there. I mean, I had no idea. I mean, he had a badge, he had something hanging down on his.
He should have, he should have a town of Medfield issued badge.
It's going to take time for that to be.
I guess what I'm saying is there a way that.
It's all on the website.
You can know in advance who has and who doesn't.
It's all on our solicitor's website.
We, we've, we've been having it on the website now for almost a year, but this new policy where they actually have to go check in and get a tag from the police station.
Right.
Did we move where it is on the, because it's on the website. I went looking for it and I finally found it on the select, well, it's, it's on the, it's on the, it was, at least on the select board page. So I was surprised, three levels down was where the solicitor list was.
At least for now, especially.
It took, it took me ten minutes to find it, because I didn't know that's where we had it. Uh, so we were talking about putting that up, yeah.
Kept the solicitor waiting at the front door the whole time.
Right.
I was going to talk to her. She was here tonight.
Bill, do you have the name? You don't, don't, you don't need to announce it. Can you let Christine? So you have the name of the company?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. Because we.
It's an old standby.
Okay. Well, we would like to know and, yeah, okay. Uh, that's all I had. And we never opened up the public hearing because we knew they weren't going to show up anyway.